I know it, I know it because they put them all over the beginning. It's somewhere where you need to expect it to go out.
He is there.
And everything that was on the last meeting.
That would be a good look for you.
Yeah. I think Jim's working on one of those right now.
Only two?
Some are flash. He doesn't know what he wants it to do, so he's...
I don't know what color it is.
I can almost see with a little...
Look, I got little tails.
Well, not sure.
It's so curly, it's got all these rations.
You didn't know that? Because you haven't had it long enough to really see that.
Well, they're more powly than...
Well, I think that he'll probably get sick of it, but right now he just decided he wanted to check it out and see how it goes.
Julie, have you ever been here? Do you know where you're sitting? I didn't know what to put a gold one on too.
There's too much, I suppose, in this, which is real... Yeah. This is so fuzzy.
We should do what?
Before everybody has to go in.
Interesting discussion.
Jim's bringing it. Should we start? Are we supposed to start? Hello. We'll call this meeting to order. The mayor's not here today, so we'll do roll call, I guess.
Mayor Schlum is absent. Councilmember Cantino?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dickey?
Here.
Councilmember Elke?
Here.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Legay?
Here.
Thank you. Well, I'm glad that this is the meeting that I'm getting because I don't have to do anything except to turn it over to Julie, I think. Presentation of the preliminary town Fountain Hills budget. And is it all you, Julie?
Vice Mayor, yes, it is myself, but also if there are any questions as we go through this, the staff is here as well. So what I was going to do is just kind of go through a brief presentation. I'm sorry, the date is wrong up on the PowerPoint. It should be actually February 21st, which I think is the date today, but it is the correct presentation. And I just wanted to go over this. This is the first of many meetings that we're going to have on the budget, so this is basically just sort of an introduction, you know, without getting into the details of the budget because we really need to go through what the goals are. As a reminder of the November budget retreat, at that retreat, the tools, the staff presented a toolbox to the council of items that to balance our projected for... Sorry. Balance our projected shortfall that we knew was going to be upcoming in the next few years. Actually, going to move this so I can see it a little bit better. So some of those tools were moved forward for further discussion during the budgeting process. No decisions have been made yet. This is just a starting point, as I said, for discussion and dialogue on the budget. We hope to get feedback from the council and the public over the next six weeks before the draft budget is put together and hopefully by the end of March. So what we're going to do is go over those toolbox options, go over their projected revenues, a brief glance at that, as well as projected expenditures, and this would be just for the operating budgets. And then talk about the initiatives. The initiatives were the result of staff getting together after the goal-setting retreat in January and developing initiatives to accomplish the council's goals. So what we're hoping is to present those initiatives tonight, and if there's a cost associated with them, and, you know, maybe get feedback from the council on whether we're on the right track or not, or whether we've missed something. So again, these are the tools, the toolbox options that are considered in the proposed budget for next year. And during the March 20th budget retreat work study, the staff will be looking for ratification of those items that the council would like the staff to move forward with. But again, this isn't something that there's going to be tonight. These are just for discussion and things that the staff has put together in the proposed budget. So again, we talked about decreasing the recreation subsidy. In other words, some programs would cost a little bit more. This wasn't all programs. We would continue to provide programs for seniors and the youth. A staff reduction of hours in vacant positions. We eliminated one position that was vacant, and there's some, we did some adjusting to some hours to reduce about $104,000. A franchise agreement, that is the agreement that Chaparral City Water wants to put to the voters. That would bring about $600,000 a year. We did include using 10% of the general fund reserves for the next five years. And we also included renegotiation of the services of community contracts, and that includes tourism, although we spelled tourism out differently, but for the purposes of this discussion, we combined it. And then recruiting a part-time prosecutor that would replace the current prosecutor that we have on contract.
Julie, when you first started talking about the toolbox items, like these, the rest of them, did you say we're not discussing these now? Or what is your hope for these particular items here?
Vice Mayor, members of the council, what I was presenting was toolbox items that we have, that the council considered, and we talked about in our retreat in November, and they have been included in these projections for the budget for next year. What, I'm happy to talk about them if you want to at tonight's meeting, but tonight's meeting was really just about the goals and initiatives to make sure we're on the right track. But certainly happy to answer any questions on those, but we weren't expecting to have any decisions or anything like that.
Okay, then, so if some of those should change, they, you don't see that that would really affect how we talk about the goals? Because there's not, like, just say we decide, well, no, we don't, we're not going to do one or two of those things. Do you see that that would have a major effect? Or we still want to go ahead and talk about the goals so that we can move ahead with what you think the priorities are?
Vice Mayor, members of the council, I think that they are all packaged together, but certainly we expect that some things are going to change. There's going to be some things going in and some things going out. Again, this is fairly early on in the process, and things are very fluid. It's a work in progress, and we expect things to change. So we'll just move forward and then kind of see where we're at, if that's okay. We also had at the November retreat a toolbox parking lot. These were items that were sort of put in, well, maybe we'll consider them, maybe we won't. They didn't, but, so they're not included in the budget. The one was the increased employee contribution to healthcare premiums. That was not put in the toolbox by council, but the staff, when we came back and looked at it, there are a lot of issues with this that we need to talk about. And Joan is here, and we can talk about those tonight definitely in depth because we did not put it, even though it was something that the council picked in the toolbox. We also talked about in November increasing our sales tax on telecommunications, and we talked about reducing our sales tax rate and replacing with a franchise, combination of a franchise and telecommunication. Again, those were items that we talked about at the retreat in November. There was no agreement or consensus from the council. It was just kind of, you know what, maybe we'll talk about this again if we need to talk about it. So these are just here to remind us to come back if the council wants to have a discussion on these or not. Again, this is the chart that kicked off the budget in November. This was, at the time that the council saw this, it was the jumpstart to the discussions. And at that time, we were looking at a $411,000 deficit in next year, primarily due to the drop in state shared revenues, which is a result of the Fountain Hills population decline because of the 2010 census. Now, obviously, things have changed since November. There have been some things that have been a positive. For one, the November sales, or, sorry, state shared revenue, state income tax, increasing next year by $369,000, and that is a solid number. They already know what that is. So they've, we've already been informed by the league that we are going to get a bump in three, of $369,000 next year based on the income tax. Also, we had projected a local sales tax increase of $100,000. That may be not so solid because that's based on if the economy continues to improve, then that is not something that we would take to the bank, but we're feeling pretty good about it. We also just got the MCSO contract for next year, and it's $127,000 less than what we had projected back in November. At that time, we had projected that that contract would increase by $150,000, but it really only increased by, like, 20, what is it, $33,000? The difference between that and $150,000. And then we also negotiated a decrease in health insurance premiums. So what that did is it actually closed that gap, and we have a different chart now, but the, and I'll just show that. And this is now our new chart in February. This includes all of the items that I just talked about, all of the increases, and it also includes the items in the budget that, at the very beginning, the toolbox items. So you can see that the fiscal sustainability is resolved for at least the next five years, assuming that everything stays the same and there's no change in services. The chart does include increased maintenance of infrastructure. Sorry.
Cassie has a question.
Do you have a dollar amount that goes with the reduction in the renegotiated healthcare?
I do. It's about, we're including the reduction in the healthcare and the, everything combined. Our health insurance dropped by $60,000 overall for the whole town. So we have a $60,000 savings there. This chart, again, it does include the increased maintenance of infrastructure that was a priority with the council, as well as the proposed franchise fee that Chaparral City Water is requesting from the voters, or will be requesting from the voters.
Julie, the franchise agreement, when does that, when would that kick in should it be successful? When would we actually have that?
Vice Mayor, members of the council, we're not 100% sure when that would be. We've talked to Chaparral City Water, and they would like to have it in March of 2013. So depending on the success of that election and when we would be able to actually have that fee go into effect, I don't know if there's a 30-day or 60-day waiting period, but, so we're not counting on that money for our next fiscal year.
Oh, okay. So that's not, that's not in there, even though it was in our toolbox?
It's actually, the way we've done it is we've included half of your revenue, which is about $300,000, but we have a manager's contingency or a contingency amount of about the same amount because in the event it doesn't pass. So it's included in the budget, but not as an expenditure. So in other words, it cancels each other out, if that makes sense. There's revenue, and then there's a contingency, so just in case it doesn't come in. But we did include it in case it does come in, if they go to the voters earlier and it is successful, we need to make sure we've accounted for it.
Okay, thank you.
Again, I'll just briefly go over these slides. This is just a real glance at the general fund, and these next few charts are just a brief glance at the revenues and expenditures for the operating funds as a starting point for discussion. Again, the goal of this work study is to present to the council the staff's recommended initiatives to accomplish the goals that were the highest priority with the town council in November. We'll go over each goal and the recommended initiatives that the staff put together and hope that we have interpreted what the council wants to have accomplished with the appropriate initiatives. We welcome feedback from the council where the initiatives don't appear to line up with the goals.
Vice Mayor. Julie, before you move in that direction, page two of seven, could you address that, those expenditures, newly proposed expenditures, that grouping there?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Legay, you want me to go through each one?
How did, how did they appear? And, and, I mean, these are new items that have been added, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. The reason they were added is because if we have resolved the issue of the deficit, these are items that have been put off for at least three or four years that are becoming critical to put back in. So when the staff put together the budget, we addressed those items that are, that we need to have done. Because, again, we've been putting them off, and they are becoming critical. There's no new programs or any new staffing or anything in the budget, but we felt it was important to put these things in, most of them. I'll have to clarify. There's merit in there, which of course is not something that is a critical infrastructure need, but it was something that we felt was important to reward the staff. And increased toddler teen events, those are things that the council indicated were a priority. The rest of them are facilities maintenance, a household hazardous waste event, a law enforcement contract, a fire, an EMS contract. These things are all included in what you're going to see.
Okay, so when I looked at the revised chart here where we're not showing a deficit, the last chart you showed, are these expenses included in this analysis?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I appreciate that. And also, just quickly, no, I don't want you to go through each and every one of them. I know that we have been deferring maintenance as we've managed our way through our crises here, our financial crisis, downturn in the economy. The ADWR fee, I know that when we had talked about that in council meeting, there was conversation regarding pushing that back to the legislature and seeing where they were at with that. I recently read that someone was actually introducing a bill to maybe take that off of local municipalities' plates. Do we have any information on that or an update, or can our attorney address that at this time?
Yes, Vice Mayor and Councilman, there is a bill that was introduced for that purpose. I believe Friday was the day that the legislature set for the last day for a bill to come out of committee in the House of Origin. I don't know if that bill came out of committee or not. I haven't checked on that lately, but we'd be happy to do that and give that information to you.
Very good, thank you. So that's, that's something that, we still have the ball in the air on that one, and I think we need to continue to look at that. Okay, well, we'll have an opportunity to go back and look at these newly added items as we move through the budgeting process. And would you say those additions were driven by the fact that you anticipate $696,000 more than we had anticipated when we had our retreat?
Vice Mayor, members of council, absolutely.
Okay, all righty.
And, and again, this is just the very first initial blush at the budget. There is going to be lots of things that are changing, lots of opportunities, specifically in March when we have the budget work study. We would expect to go through the budget line by line, program by program, division by division, however, the council, any council member wants to for every detail. All the, all the detail is included in this budget document that you have and is available online as well. So it's all there, and definitely want to talk about it.
I understand that, and I appreciate that, and I understand we're kind of at a 30,000-foot level this evening, but I did want to just put one comment on the table that I'd like us to consider as we move through this process, is that when we engaged in our toolbox activity, we were looking at a very different number that drove a lot of decisions we made. So I need to go back and think about how academic some of those decisions were, given the fact that we have almost $700,000 in additional revenue that we didn't anticipate. So I'll just hold that thought, but I think it's something we need to consider as we move through. Because what it does for me is it says perhaps that that toolbox activity we engaged in may have had very, very different outcome if we had very different numbers, and I understand numbers change. So we'll have an opportunity to discuss that going forward, I hope.
Absolutely. Vice Mayor, members of council, the goal would be in the, at the March work study, that we would look for ratification of those toolbox items. Which one do you want us to move forward with? Which ones do you want us not to move forward with? Again, this is kind of put it out there, put it in the public, give it to the council so that there's lots of opportunity for dialogue from the public and from the council as well. But definitely by March, we'll be looking for some confirmation of which ones to move forward with.
Thank you, Julie. Thanks, Vice Mayor.
Councilwoman Elke?
Julie, a question for you. Along that, on that same page, we see $33,000 for contract with MCSO. That says revised with confirmation with MCSO. How does that, how does that reconcile with the savings that we're, you're showing a few slides ago for $127,000? Where do those compare?
It's in there.
That $127,000?
It's, that's what has changed. Originally, when we talked back in November, we anticipated $150,000.
Okay.
But now we know that it's only a $27,000 difference. So that was, I made those adjustments in the budget. We've already put those numbers in. So in other words, it's, the deficit that we had included $150,000, now the deficit only included $33,000.
Okay. Vice Mayor. So that's, so that's basically the delta, I mean, that's, that's, that's the difference between what we anticipated and where we're at now. So we're still increasing by $33,000, but you had projected $150,000.
Correct.
So that's, 33 is the difference between $127,000 and $150,000, is that what you're saying?
Correct. And then again, you know, we're still going to, well, there's lots more things that are going to happen between now and the end of March. We'll get our league update in March of what state, what the sales tax is and the vehicle license tax and the HERF is. So these numbers are going to change slightly, plus any additions or changes that the councilmen, the council members make in March. So again, this is just, we're starting here.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. On, on the same page, two of seven, the largest number is $350,000 for major facilities maintenance. Will we see a, an itemized list where that money's going?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm here. Julie, I think what we're seeing is obviously we're, we're seeing all these things, we're reacting to them, and I understand. I think we're trying to work our way with how, what is the relationship between what we're seeing here and then what you seem, what would you, what you'd like us to do, which would be to look at those goals and whether we believe some of the items that the staff came up with to solve or to address some of those goals if we want to go forward with those. It's a little hard for us, I think, to separate, but we'll, we'll try to do that. But I just, I think everybody understands that we're, this is very early on, and we're moving through this. For example, when we talk about MCSO and the fire contracts, or, you know, one of the things that I've been trying to find out for sure is when are the contracts up? Not, not just the automatic sort of rollovers, but when are we up for real negotiations? I've had some people ask me questions about some of the ambulance, what's going on in Scottsdale and how that's relating. So I think we have to have some, some deeper conversations, but if you'd like, maybe we could, we'll try to, to continue in the way of going, which is what you would like us to do, which is to look at the goals, but please be patient that we, we do have a lot of questions as we see all these things in front of us.
And Vice Mayor, that's why the staff is here, so we can go as deep as you want. Again, you just got this last week, so I didn't expect that you would be able to have had an opportunity to go all the way through it, but we're here to answer any questions, so feel free to go wherever you want to go. We'll just keep going.
Okay, thank you.
Keep going.
Okay.
Councilwoman?
On the law enforcement contract, I saw, I think it was a $24,000 amount included for care. Is that reflected? Is that included?
Vice Mayor, that would be in the fire contract?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay.
That is included.
And also on the cost of living, the $69,000, what percentage is that?
Two and a half. Two and a half. Again, this is just a chart showing our revenues. You can see on the bars to the left that we've got that bump in shared revenue. That's because of the bump in income tax. And then in sales taxes, that includes obviously a franchise fee. That's included in that number, so that's why those are bumped up. General fund expenditures, pretty much with the exception of development services, and again, that's because of all the maintenance items, the major maintenance items. That's the department where those come from. You can see that there is a bump in those divisions next year, and the public safety, police and fire, there's a slight bump there. This is our HERF revenue we're expecting, and we've not gotten confirmation, so this is just early again, $1.4 million. And if we get 1.4, if that's the amount, that's how much we'll budget in HERF, because obviously we need whatever we can in HERF for our streets. Our downtown, our, downtown, our excise tax revenues, economic development, we're expecting a little bit of a bump from $284,000 to about $290,000. And again, these are the new items that are proposed in the budget. You have it in your book. We've kind of talked about it, but again, this is the same thing. The increase in the wash maintenance, the new equipment for GIS, there's a new plot or printer that's needed there. The ADWR fee that we've not gotten confirmation that we don't have to pay, so we're going to make sure that we include it, and if by chance that the legislature does away with it, then that will be able to come out. We want to have a household hazardous waste event. Again, the major facilities maintenance, that's, you know, painting, repairing walls, doors, things that we've been putting off for a while. Our parking, parks, parking lots, maintenance for about $36,000. Increased toddler and teen events, a citizen satisfaction survey, and again, most of these, I think, are tied to the goals, so you'll see those. The cost of living at two and a half percent, and again, our law enforcement and our fire contracts. So those totals of those new things that are in the budget for next year proposed is $728,000. This chart, I know people probably can't read it in the audience, you have it in your book, but this was the exercise we went through with in January with the goals, and these are the goals that the council, were, were priorities with the council, and these are where we then focused on the initiatives to accomplish those goals. So with that, what I'll do is I'll start with goal one, goal two, goal three, and look at the initiatives, and if there's something that we've either misinterpreted or left off or you'd want to add, if we, it'd be great if we could know that now. So this is the opportunity to talk about those initiatives to make sure, because, again, they are included in the budget, but maybe they don't need to be, or maybe we've missed something, so feel free to go ahead and add that or clarify what those initiatives are.
Vice Mayor, if I may, I took advantage of the laptop here. I think the bill that Councilman Legay was talking about is Senate Bill 1288. It did pass the Senate and has moved on to the House, so it's gone through one hurdle.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just looked that up, too. Thank you.
Okay, the priority one, this was the number one priority for the council, and that was to genuinely solicit and consider public and stakeholder feedback as part of the decision-making process. Some of the initiatives that staff came up with was to create a budget committee, including two members of the public, possibly graduates from the citizens academy, and solicited through volunteer program, meaning there's no fiscal impact, it wouldn't cost any more money, however, there would be an impact on staff time. Conduct a statistically valid citizen survey correlating to the previous statistically valid survey, and that's about $35,000 we put in the budget for that. Staff would attend at least 12 meetings per year, one per month, with community organizations, HOAs, et cetera. Again, there'd be no fiscal impact, but it would impact staff time, but we would, the goal would be to go out to each of the groups, make presentations on the budget or any other decisions that the council is considering, and allow for questions there. Enhance the town website to promote citizen feedback, comments on specific initiatives or general comments, and utilize our telephone technology to make calls to citizens to inform them of upcoming events. And we currently have that technology right now, the robo-calls, and we've started using it successfully in the volunteer program to remind people when they need to come up and volunteer, so it's a very real thing that we can do. So that was the initiatives that we came up with for that first goal. Any, if there's any opportunity, or if, did we miss anything?
Councilwoman Hansen? I was going to say Cassie.
Yeah, well, Julie, on the survey, can that be broadened to, to get feedback from the citizens, kind of like when we talked about our postmortem thing, and to get some feedback on, you know, different funding and revenue enhancements?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, I think we could do both. I think the value in a statistically valid survey tying it to the other survey is to kind of see how we've done and be able to measure, but at the same time, we want to do a postmortem on the bonds. We may have other things that we want to put out there, but do it as a separate type survey, maybe a little less formal type of thing. I mean, I think we can do both, or we can combine it and do it however we want. I think what we were...
$35,000 is a pretty, you know, it's a hefty chunk.
Well, that includes both.
Okay.
That's not just for the one survey. That would be to include, to do the postmortem on the bonds or anything else. So I think the statistically valid survey was 30,000, so an extra 5,000 to do anything else.
Okay, that makes a difference.
Julie, the budget committee, so we have a budget committee. Would that just include then inviting two members to, of the public to be in that committee that we already have?
Yes, the goal would be that we would open it up to any citizens in the community who had experience, who understood, so it wouldn't just be somebody that didn't have any idea because there's a training and period where you need to go. So we would look for somebody that understood kind of how it works, but it would be, yes, they would come in and join the budget committee the way that we have now.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilwoman Hansen?
Just call me Cassie.
Cassie?
I'd prefer to see a little bit more citizen involvement than that, than two people. Just throwing that out there.
Well, I'm sure we can talk about that.
Yeah, I think I'm...
What was on it now, basically?
We have two members of the council, and we have the department directors, and Quinnell and myself. Two members, three members of the council. The mayor and two members of the council.
Okay.
But again, you know, I mean, it gets, well, we could try it with three. I just don't want, you know, because it takes longer as you go through, but we could try it with three.
How would this relate to the blue ribbon committee that SPAC has been talking about? I mean, would they be related at all? Or, I mean, would they also be involved in budget or... Or?
Well, we, what we were looking for was somebody that wasn't already either a commissioner or somebody that was already involved in the community. It would be somebody from the public who would be able to then provide input from the public's perspective, but also then be able to go out into the public and be able to, to educate people out there as well. I think the feeling is that if we have somebody that's either a commissioner or on a commission, that they're very much already tied into the, to the political process, and maybe there would be a little less openness with them.
I think it would be helpful to better utilize the committees that we do have and perhaps task them with certain items, using SPAC for public safety issues and budgeting and ideas, and SPAC for other budget issues, and to, during our joint meetings, to provide presentations or provide reports, or whatever it may be, and utilizing them in addition to having citizens involved with the budget committee itself. But I think we're underutilizing our commissions right now, and I think we could probably be a little more, a little more clear in inserting certain things for them to do as far as the council's concerned.
Maybe my impression of the, of the blue ribbon is more of an overall, and this is more of a next year's budget. And that might be one way that they would be operating in different ways. Maybe they're looking at the big picture, sustainable revenue, you know, looking to make sure that those lines don't cross. And this committee I look at is maybe more immediate. And that might be a difference between them. But they certainly could be working together. And what Tate was saying about having, utilizing, not to mention the fact that if we do have budgets that we want to go out and communicate, that would be really helpful if we had a whole bunch of people that were interested in doing that, too.
I mean, we find a lot of times, I mean, some of the commissions are asking for stuff to do, or they have nothing to do. So I think we could communicate certain things, certain tasks for them to familiarize themselves, certain sections that may be relevant for them to research and investigate and provide reports to us on that. I think that could be helpful.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Henry.
Hello.
Formality. Just, just one last question, and I don't want to beat this into the ground. I think the intent during the retreat with respect to item number one was to have more citizen input as it related to moving forward on our budget, and specifically having a couple, couple members, you know, to be, to be defined. You know, it's always a question of one, two, three, what, what background do they bring to the table with respect to municipal governance? As we well know, personal financing is very different than our municipal financing, and it's extremely complex to get your arms wrapped around. So I'm very much open to selecting or having however many we decide to serve. But I think, getting back to what Councilwoman Hesse was, Hansen, hey, that's a combination, huh?
Nice ring, Tom.
I guess.
Whoever that is should have to come up.
Yeah, exactly.
Answer some questions.
I guess where I was, I guess where I was going with that is that depending how the survey is done, and how well the survey is done, we can utilize this as a way to tap what I call needs, needs assessment, which could be information that could be used in the budget process that would be coming from the citizenry at large. So I just want to, want to keep that in mind in terms of how that survey can also be a vehicle for high involvement governance and having people involved in prioritizing what they'd like to see us focus on in, in the budget. So I think there's a couple ways of getting that involvement, having people onboard as well as using survey information, which is probably more far-reaching, frankly. Thank you.
Okay. Next goal is, this was the second priority, develop a comprehensive economic development strategy for the town's future and work with our partners to forward economic growth and awareness. And again, we would review the economic development plan annually and recommend revisions as appropriate.
What, what is the status on that now? I thought we've been working on one?
We have been working on one. It's, I believe, in the final draft. It's in the final draft form, yes.
When, final draft form, do we have a, maybe it's more appropriate for Lori, but do we have a release date on that? Because there's been a lot of questions about that. So just, do we, do we have a firm date on that?
Good evening, Vice Mayor Dickey and councilmembers. Councilmember Elke, I anticipate wrapping everything up by the end of this fiscal year. We certainly want to get stakeholder input and feedback. And once it's in its, what I, in a, in a form where I think it's ready to get that stakeholder feedback, we certainly want to push it on out, but it should be ready to come before the council before the end of the fiscal year.
The third priority was to develop and maintain a balanced, equitable, sustainable, and local financing structure to support the town's core government services as desire, at desired service levels. One of the initiatives, initiatives is to outreach to the community citizens regarding proposals that came from the November Toolbox Retreat, highlight individual proposals during the budget process, reemphasizing sustainability. We also put in funds to update the Hawking Report that I think was done in 2005, if I remember correctly. Was it '07?
'07.
Okay, to update that Hawking Report, if the council wishes. We would support Chaparral City Water with their franchise election in the spring of 2013. We would continue to work with partners and legislators on the creation of a public safety district. And we would, and this came from the staff, consider a public safety fee on all property owners similar to what Paradise Valley did. And again, this was something that, that I put in. It wasn't something that the council brought up. I just wanted to make that clear. This was something I put in just for discussion purposes.
Vice Mayor?
Henry.
Julie, regarding the Hawking Report, I think in spirit, it always makes sense to go back and update studies and reports and plans of that nature. You know, I've been looking at it a lot in the last year, and I feel that the recommendations that are in that report were relevant then, and they're, and they're relevant today. So I question the need, really, to, to update that. It's, it's, it's very contemporary. You know, I'll leave that up to, you know, financial wizards to take a closer look at it. But I believe at the highest level, the recommendations in there are as relevant today as they were in 2007. And I just don't really see the need in, in spending $25,000 to update that report. But that's, that's just my, my thought going forward. And if someone can convince me otherwise, you know, I'd be really, you know, open to, to that discussion. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor, members of the council, the reason that we put that in there is because there is a lot of relevance to the Hawking Report and a lot of reference to it. It comes up frequently, time and time again. And there's data in there that may be outdated. But, you know, the relevance is the same, it's just a matter of the data. Where have we changed versus where have the other cities that we're compared to changed? Have they done the same as we have, or have they done better or worse? And then that kind of gives us a barometer if we're going in the right direction or not. But it's, it's clearly up to the council if they want to spend the money to do it.
Anybody else have anything? I think as far as the last two, those are definitely, need to be discussed further. I don't know whether do it now, if I'm mayor here or whatever. But the public safety district, I think we, I thought we had decided not to pursue that. So I, I'm a little bit curious as to what maybe have changed that. We had an awful lot of caveats about going forward with something like that. And ultimately, it is a property tax. And then the public safety fee, I would be interested in knowing more about that, because it really, until we kind of tossed that out there at the retreat, wasn't something that I was really that familiar with, except for in the old days when we did the ambulance contracting and that kind of thing. So, but the public safety district is, again, a huge undertaking to even look at going, and that would require an awful lot of time and study. So, again, I, I don't know that I would want to spend resources in doing that, because the way the law exists right now, is this what we want to do, in the way we want to do it, doesn't exist. So there's an awful lot of Pandora's Box there. So I don't know how, if it's just because of finances and that just was thrown back on there. But the same issues are still there that were there before. So I don't know exactly how everybody feels about putting a lot of effort into doing that, again.
Yes, Tate?
Perhaps that'd be something best for one of these commissions to look at, whether it's PSAC or SPAC, to look at, something like that, for them to do a little investigation on it and to work on that, and then to come to council, let them do the legwork as opposed to us spending the time, so we can see what that may look like and if it's really, truly feasible, and then go from there.
That sounds good to me. I, does anybody have any other feedback on this?
Perhaps the chief, the fire chief.
Does anybody out there have any feedback on this?
I'm looking at the guy in the white shirt.
Yeah, I, it's not. I'm in favor of getting information, as long as we're not having a lot of resources put into that with, with our staff. There's so many hurdles, basically, to that. And the overriding aspect of it is that it's a property tax. And there's just so much to that. So I, and again, yes, okay, great. Chief?
Vice Mayor, council, on the PV fee, just I want to bring you up to date on that. And I'm not suggesting we do any one of the two, or whatever you want. But the PV fee, PV fee is going through state legislature as we speak. I don't know if it's come out of committee yet. But when that bill does come out, we would not be able to qualify for it the way it's written, because it's written for communities of 10,000 and less. So when it comes out, and it does pass, if it does pass, and it withstands a legal challenge, because there's a fear that, as somebody had mentioned up there, that it's truly not a fee, it's a tax, and that the, there's groups out there that would go after it immediately. But if it survived those two, well then, you know, if the council and the town was desirous to try to modify that legislation to allow us to participate in there, because this, this bill is being written for PV and PV only. But it is doable to re-modify. And, you know, we would certainly be willing to help that happen if you so chose down the road. But, you know, I, I think I would wait a week or two until we see what happens with this bill. Is it going to make it out of, out of the legislature or not? If it doesn't, then it really becomes kind of a moot point in the near term unless, you know, the town wants to gear up through the league, or rural metro, or whoever, to try to run their own bill through next year's legislative session. But either one of those that you're talking about is going to have to be borne in the state legislature.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Henry.
Just for the record, I'm, I'm not in favor of moving in that direction. You know, it's not something that was brought up by council. It's something we've never discussed before. And I, I, I once again think it's academic, given, given the laws and the legislature. What I find interesting about this EV2 is that we seem to be looking at these last two items as possible revenue sources to support our, our fire services in our, in our general fund. And I don't, I, it seems to be lacking other initiatives here that could, in fact, jumpstart our economy and provide us more revenue, particularly economic development, and, and as we've talked about, job creation, job growth, so forth and so on. And I recognize that those are probably in a more specific area. But nonetheless, I, I look towards that as a solution rather than what, what we have before us here, which is probably even not possible. But clearly, I'm not in favor of, of those. And as you've clarified, and I think it's important to clarify, these are staff recommendations. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, if I may, so, so I can reiterate what I think I heard is on the, working with partners and legislators on this idea of a public safety district, that was something that the council sort of wanted to give more research to, not staff time, if I understood that correctly, that possibly a commission, commission group or some sort of committee to research that. But that we wouldn't do staff time or, or focus on that at all. Is that, okay. And then the second thing, I'm not sure on the public safety fee, if that's something we just want to take off the table right now. And I realize the council can't vote, but if, if I get, if it appears that there's no support for it, then we just, we won't bother to even bring it back.
Since it says similar to Paradise Valley, did they, were they able to do something that they didn't need legislation for?
No, that's not it right now.
Oh, so you're saying this is what they're trying to do right now. And so it's a fee. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, to me, something like that, again, is, is, is almost, I think we have to come up with some, some solutions for how to fund the town. And that, I'm not sure about, about pursuing that at this time, at least in my opinion. But, you know, you got, yes, Cassie?
I, I guess I would say just leave it on the table for now. And if we're going to have some of our commissions look at these things, you know, include every possible place to, to find the funding. Because whatever we could free up in that area would, would give us quite a bit of money to use for streets. And it may alleviate a bond in that area. I mean, you know, it's going to come from somewhere. And it's, you know, it's going to be a tax or a property tax, or, I mean, you know, we can call it different words, but they all boil down to the same thing.
Yes. Tate?
I, I think we should, it should be something that the commissions look at, and it may be a moot point, certainly not for next fiscal year, because with the uncertainty as far as whether this passes through the legislature, and then it doesn't apply to us. So there would have to be an amendment, which would probably be, would have to be another legislative session. So for this next fiscal year, the, the public safety fee probably wouldn't even apply. We would, couldn't even project any potential for revenues for something like that. But I do think that that's something that our commission should be looking at, at PSAC and SPAC, and the various commissions should be looking at and providing us with that information. With respect to the public safety district, my understanding, I wasn't on the council at the time, and I don't think I was living in town at the time, when it was presented, when the property tax vote came through. And that was primarily to supplement or take care of public safety, or to make up that shortcoming after the town took over the fire district. And it seems to me that there was some trepidation by our residents that, well, if I give you a property tax that goes in the general fund, the council can increase it and do whatnot. I think the public safety district, if set up similar to a fire district, perhaps could allay some of those concerns of the public, that these are monies that are going for fire and police and those alone. And then I would, if something like that were possible, it'd be wonderful to reduce our sales tax percentage and maintain our streets as well, without having to do anything additional, no bonds or anything like that. So I think that would certainly be something worth looking at.
I think the, this also folds into a, a bigger discussion about public safety and with the fire safety. I think talking about when, when the contract is up and when we're actually, what we're actually talking about on a really big level, including looking at having our own fire department. If we're going to be really talking about the best way to serve the community and then doing it at the, at the best price, I think we have a lot of discussion that has to be had, whether, whether it has to do with the changes in, in ambulance service, or if it has to do with having our own or continuing the contract. It's a really big discussion, a bigger, a bigger discussion than what we would obviously have now or at any time without a whole lot of information. But part of what we talked about with a, with a safety district, including a fire safety district, is that obviously, at this point, there would have to be a board, and there would be another entity. And we'd be not, we'd be going, we'd be moving away from having it be a municipal, whether it's the fire or the police. So there are a lot of discussions to be had, to be going in that direction in the way that it exists right now. So I understand what you mean. But we also have to look at what, what does that mean? We used to have a road district, too. So are we going, not necessarily backwards, but are we going back to the way we had things separated out like that? And do we want a town- And do we want a town that isn't involved in those efforts, roads, fire, police, that kind of thing? Tate?
Thanks. I think the public safety district doesn't exist currently right now within our legislature, so I think there's a whole host of things that can be discussed. We could, various cities or town councils could, similar that we do with our facilities districts, where we turn our hats around and sit as board members. So I think there's a whole host of things, and something like that could perhaps be viable for small towns like Fountain Hills and other municipalities that need something like that. So that's a possibility, it's all worth discussion, I mean, and there's, I don't think it should just go away. It should go to our commissions, we shouldn't be using town staff except for the time to set up the commission meetings, and that's necessary there, but I think our commissions and committees should be looking at that.
You made a good point there, Tate. It is all worth discussion, and it's all worth examining things for the good of everybody and trying to do that in a freeway. I think I saw you nod, to be able to discuss these items, and that's what we're here for, to try to solve problems, and discussing things doesn't mean to get crucified about it the next day. Thanks.
Fourth priority is to promote retention, expansion, and relocation of quality businesses. And again, this is further along with Councilmember Legay, expand upon the outreach efforts in one of the targeted industry sectors to encourage business locations, which create new employment opportunities and increase daytime population. Utilize the trade area analysis to target recruitment efforts on those businesses, the business sectors identified. Encourage the location of businesses along the avenue that complement and support the existing basis. This has a fiscal impact of $42,000 minus $8,000. Okay, I'm misreading that, sorry. I'll have to get clarification from Lori on what exactly this, the fiscal impact is.
Forty-two thousand total, and then it's a breakdown by funds.
Got it. Sorry, $42,000 total, $8,000 from the general fund and $35,000 from the downtown excise tax fund. Sorry about that. A significant portion geographically falls within the downtown area, the retail office and avenue initiatives. So again, the fiscal impact would be $42,000, with $34,000 coming from the exciser downtown fund and $8,000 from the general fund.
Maybe could Lori just give us an example of what that would include?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to make a clarification, the $42,000 is for the three initiatives, it's not just for the one initiative. The way it was formatted here may have led you all to believe it was just for the last initiative, and that is not correct, it's for all three of those initiatives. This particular initiative, or excuse me, this particular priority, EV4, the $42,000 would include developing and implementing what I call integrated marketing strategies. It would include lead development, it would include deploying a communication strategy for the outreach efforts in the targeted industry category, as well as the trade area analysis, which is retail. That's, the trade area analysis is for the retail, as well as doing some targeted industry, targeted industry sectors for the avenue, and again, that would be the retail. And so that's what that would be for, lead development, deploying some communication strategies, and doing, developing and deploying what I call integrated marketing strategies. And that could, that could include such things as marketing pieces, phone calls, it could include some trade shows, it could include some very targeted things there.
Thank you.
Okay, keep going. Number five, lower the reliance on state revenues by developing a locally controlled, reliable funding source for infrastructure maintenance. Create an infrastructure maintenance fund for facilities, parks, and fire, not including roads. It would require an initial cash infusion of $500,000 and annual contributions of $275,000 from the general fund. Excluded in all of this analysis is the lake liner and the park lights, because they're very large expenditures, and these are not included in the budget. Correct? Correct. These are currently not in the budget that we have right now. So the dedicated, it would be a dedicated fund with proceeds from an increase in the telecommunications sales tax potentially. An increase to 3.1 from 2.6 would provide about $275,000 a year. Capital projects fund could fund the initial $500,000, and the new fund would be dedicated again to the infrastructure maintenance. Another option is to sell assets that have become expensive to maintain and have limited future value. So those are some of the proposals that the staff came up with, to try to come up with a way, a reliable way to maintain our infrastructure, meaning our parks, our buildings, our fire stations, all of those things that kind of, when we have a budget slump, they get pushed off and pushed off and end up costing more.
Yes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Julie, give me two assets that you feel we should sell that have become expensive to maintain?
Well, the one asset that we talked about or have talked about, meaning staff has talked about internally, is the Kiwanis building. Currently, the town owns the Kiwanis building, and it's quite old and needs a lot, a significant amount of repairs. We have a lease with the Kiwanis group to lease that building, but we don't get any revenue from it, but we're responsible for maintaining it and doing any major repairs. So that would be one example of a building that perhaps either give back to Kiwanis or sell to Kiwanis, whatever we would legally be able to do.
That's one.
That's one.
That's, are there other pieces of property that the town has?
Well, I said asset, so it could be things like big equipment, a tractor, street sweepers.
I'm not trying to put you on the
No, that's okay.
I appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
So basically, this whole item is here only if we had a telecommunications sales tax?
Vice Mayor, that's not the only way we could do it. We could fund it, it would have to come out of the general fund. One option is to increase revenues to fund it, another option is just to, you know, put it in the general fund and somehow find the $275,000. The $500,000 could come out of the capital projects fund. So they're not tied together that you can't do one without the other. These, again, are just options that the staff put together. And let me just clarify, we were heading towards a dedicated fund, meaning it would be separated from the general fund. So it could only be used for infrastructure maintenance.
Like that's just a solution to try to offset what you have to go through every year to try to maintain infrastructure as we age? So, again, worth discussing, not sure about how to fund it.
It could be in the general fund, and then it just becomes part of the general fund, or it could be set aside in a special dedicated fund, which you would need a dedicated revenue source for, so.
So let me ask you this, would it be worth doing the cash infusion without knowing we had reliable $275 a year? Or do they go together?
No, Vice Mayor, members of the council, if the decision was to create the fund, we could create the fund with the $500,000. Then if the decision is just to find the money in the general fund, that would just mean that we would have to rearrange our priorities, and we would find it in the general fund, but it wouldn't be a dedicated fund. So it would still be in the general fund, and the general fund would be responsible for doing all that maintenance stuff. And then we'd be right back where we were when the general fund, when we have the economic downturn, then that, those are the things that get pushed off and pushed off. So what we're trying to resolve is that, similar to our vehicle replacement fund, that it's outside of the general fund, because it is maintenance that has to be done.
So you all want to leave that as a $500,000 cash infusion from the capital funds, or do we need to discuss this further? Because I'm not sure about that. Tate?
I think it's something worth discussing further, that the only concerns that I would have is how that fund would be set up, and if it would tie future council's hands, if there's a budget shortfall, if we're dedicating it for that and you can't touch it except for these particular projects, because having the flexibility that we have now to pay for things and to put things off to balance our budgets is certainly helpful. So I suppose it would depend on how that fund is set up, and what the limitations are on that particular fund. So I think it's worth discussing. But worth discussing doesn't necessarily mean in favor of increasing the telecommunications tax and increasing the sale, yeah, yeah, telecommunications tax, excuse me. So I think we'd have to have some more information about what the fund would look like exactly.
And I'd also like to look at some other options other than increasing telecommunications. You know, we've already said no to that several times, and I'm a little disappointed that this keeps reappearing as a solution. I mean, we've said no to that several times. So with that being said, are there any other options? I think we need to look at other options, for example, you know, capital projects funds, we've dedicated certain amount of that to certain areas, construction sales tax revenue, so forth and so on. Is there a work around there, where a portion of that could be dedicated or set aside to keep that fund going? And the bottom line is, is that, you know, we need to pay as we go, and if the money's not there, then there are things that we've been very good at adjusting over the last several years, and I would hope that we would continue to do that. To me, it's kind of like an unfunded mandate, and I don't want to depend on a source of dollars that we've already said no to several times. Thank you.
Do you want to leave the part about selling the assets? Because we would have to know, obviously, the ramifications to, well, just the one that you mentioned was Kiwanis, I don't know, probably you'll know better than anybody else, the equipment and things like that, that we could, that we don't need maybe, but I'm not sure about that, selling the buildings.
Vice Mayor, if I may, my thinking is that, you know, it's worked very well for the vehicle replacement, and in theory, I agree with where you're going with this. And if dollars could be moved aside to set that fund up, then I think, you know, we play as we go moving forward. I mean, for example, if we have a budget surplus, which we've had since I've been on council, a portion of that could be, I mean, there's a number of ways of doing it, so I wouldn't want to take it off the table, but I don't feel comfortable, you know, with an increase in telecommunications tax, because we've decided not to go there on two occasions, particularly because of where we're at in our economy, and I do not look at that as a possible solution. So other options, perhaps?
Cassie?
Well, and maybe, I mean, I think it's good to have the fund. When Paul gave us that report on all the facilities and all the things that are going wrong with them, I mean, obviously, there's a lot that needs to be done, but, you know, maybe looking, and I don't think the Kiwanis would want to buy the building back, because then they'd be having to pay the property taxes, and that's why they got rid of it in the first place. But maybe renegotiating the lease, where the town would get any rental revenues, if there were any, that could go for the upkeep of the building, to try and offset that a little bit.
Okay, Vice Mayor, what I'm hearing is take the telecommunications right off the table, is what I think I'm hearing from the council, and come up with another way, and we can certainly do that. I just wanted to make sure that that's what, that I'm hearing correctly, so that will not come back.
Until next year.
And I think I
Will not come back.
And then the idea of putting $500,000 from capital projects fund into the initial fund, I'm not really ready to say yes to that either. I don't know if anybody else is, but, sorry.
Okay, Vice Mayor, members of council, when we come back in March and when we have the actual, where, you know, we'll go line item by line item, we will have another proposal that the council can talk about and debate, and we can figure out from there, but we'll eliminate that one component of it.
Thank you.
Okay. Number six, communicate the role of local government and clearly define the trade-offs between service levels and amenities and the associated costs, so residents can make informed choices. We want to continue the citizens academy, that's been very successful. This year, we had, I think the first year, we had up to 14, this year, we've got up to 19, so it's a very successful program, and I think it does, it serves these citizens well to learn how it works. Create a reader-friendly report that citizens can understand, and this transcends through budget, through annual financial reports. We're currently working on, and have worked on, a budget in brief, and then we're currently working on what's called a PAFR, which is like the CAFR, but it's a popular annual financial report. It's a more reader-friendly, smaller report that is very citizen-friendly, so we're working on that as well. One of the SPAC recommendations that was talked about and was also a priority of the council was to create a sense of urgency regarding the importance of residents and businesses taking responsibility to financially participate in the town's infrastructure maintenance and provision of basic services to protect homeland and property values. This initiative is something that the SPAC brought forward, so I'm not sure how to interpret that. It sort of sounds like the last thing we talked about as far as the infrastructure, so we put that in there because, again, it was, did rise to the level of a priority for the council, and this was SPAC's initiative to move forward with that. The other one was to utilize the results of citizen survey to compare the previous survey, and this is where we talk about that statistically valid survey, and citizens will communicate where we need to do better. And then, again, talking about introducing the idea of a property fire fee to cover the cost of fire and EMS protection. And this was all about creating that, this is our fire and emergency service, and this is how much it costs, is all it was. Okay, I'll keep going. Number seven, and this is also number eight, CR2 and CR3 are very related. Discover, recognize, and utilize the talents of our citizens and use these assets to address community needs. We would advertise with a request for proposals for specific needs or a skill set that a member of the community may have and may want to offer services to the town, and we want to foster a culture of public service and volunteerism through the annual Make a Difference Day. That was a very successful program, brought out a lot of citizens, and so that's something that we would move forward and continue with.
Somehow, I ended up with an AARP magazine at home, and
Do you have a birthday coming?
I was reading it. No, it's passed. There's something called Time Banks, it was actually timebanks.org, and we talk about having committees look at things. I really don't know much about it at all, except what I read in the magazine, and then I looked it up online, and it's about, it's not exactly bartering, but it's, because everything is in time, so it's like, so, you know, if you did something legal for somebody for an hour, it would still be an hour, even if somebody did it like raking or weeding or something like that. But apparently, it's just very widespread, and it's something that maybe we could look into with our volunteers, because it's not even just like, oh, I'm volunteering to drive somebody someplace, but somewhere down the line, that person helps you, you know, paint your house or something, you know, it just, they had all these different examples, so that might be something to look at. Obviously, it wouldn't cost anything as far as what people can do for the town, but it also helps roll into number six, which was about, you know, these trade-offs and that kind of stuff. We've heard a lot recently about nice-to-haves versus need-to-haves and that kind of stuff, and, you know, that's a very true, you know, choice to make. I mean, yeah, we could turn the fountain off, and we could not have a community center, and we could do all those things, if you considered those nice-to-haves, and then just thought of the public safety and the roads as what we need to have. But if we do have that sort of understanding, this number six, which I really like, the urgency, you really are trying to make a decision, what kind of town do we want? And if we can help some of those nice-to-haves, which to some people might be what makes this town what they like, then maybe we can put something like this in place that'll help our volunteers. So I'd really like to be able to have that be in the toolbox, so to speak, or to have something that maybe we can look, we don't actually have a volunteer commission. We were talking about having a quality of life commission, we haven't quite gotten there yet, but this might be something, if we can have this looked into, it could help us do other things that we are unable to do.
Timebank.org?
Yeah, it's called timebanks.org, and I'm happy to help work on that, now that the centennial's over, so, but anyway.
Are you an AARP member?
Yeah, have to be. There's an age requirement, 55 or over.
Vice Mayor, as an AARP member, I would also offer that our firm would look at any procurement issues that might relate to that, since the citizen would be getting some service back for what they would be providing. So we'll look at that as well.
Thank you, I appreciate that, because I think that's part of why they say I appreciate that, because I think that's part of why they say, whatever the thing is, it's just the time, so that everything is even. Everything's equal, and nobody's gaining, so...
The procurement statutes and regulations aren't always on the cutting edge of opportunities.
Really? Thank you.
Okay, number nine, provide an interconnected multi-use trail and bicycle system that promotes active living, physical activity, education, and appreciation of our parks and natural resources. We would coordinate and promote activities with our neighbor, McDowell Mountain Regional Park. We would coordinate with the Tourism Bureau to promote the town trails and our bicycle system as part of active living, including a booth during the two fairs. We would have new flyers distributed to Valley Sports Stores where they promote races and run, runs and hikes. We would promote the FIT, which is the Fountain Hills Interconnected Trails. Our urban trails plan, create a flyer for distribution, coordinate with tourism, create new town webpage dedicated to healthy living, active lifestyles. Utilize the FIT logo to promote trails, signage to mark FIT stations around town. Okay, keep going. Number 10, maintain a current condition assessment of all roadways and sidewalks, and prioritize and implement maintenance efforts to minimize costly reconstruction. We are proposing to update the STANTEC report. That has a fiscal impact of about $35,000 in the HERF budget. And then evaluate the post-mortem on the bond with the public and prepare a new strategy for recommendation.
Vice Mayor?
Yes?
What is the, what is the purpose of updating the STANTEC report?
I'll invite Paul Moot up to respond to that.
Vice Mayor and council members, updating the STANTEC report will just give you the current assessment of the roads. We could also include taking some core samples of some of the roads, like Saguaro, Palisades, and looking at their conditions. But, I mean, I can really, I can realistically tell you what it's going to say.
Vice Mayor, if I may, don't, don't we have a pretty good gauge of the condition of our roads currently? And don't we have a good gauge in terms of what needs work and what doesn't need work and what type of work? Because you've presented that plan to us in the pavement management plan, which is an offshoot of the STANTEC. So I'd be, I'd be hard pressed to...
Correct.
Support this funding when we have a, you know, we know where our significant needs are, I guess, is my point. So I don't feel I need a study to, to shine a light on, on those things.
And you're absolutely correct. This was just in response to the, to the goal that was set forth.
Okay, thank you.
When was the last STANTEC report done?
2008.
2008. Thank you, Paul.
Thanks. Oh, uh-oh. We're in number 10, right? There we go.
We're in number 10? Okay, so what I'm hearing is we don't want to move forward with having another report done, but we will evaluate the post-mortem on the bond, obviously, and prepare a new strategy for recommendation. So if we've missed something on this goal, again, this was a council priority, if there's something more that we should be doing for this goal, another initiative, I guess we weren't sure what we were supposed to be doing. We do have the current assessment. We know what condition the roads are in, but we were trying to respond to that.
I think if you asked everyone in the room, the council, as far as what you've heard or what the reason that the bond didn't pass, probably too much and not specific. I mean, that's kind of what I've heard. I don't know if fellow council members have heard the same thing. It was too much and not specific enough as far as what was being off, or what was going to be done. Certainly interested to see what staff is able to gather, but I would be very surprised if it was something beyond, beyond that.
Okay, well, like I said, we'll do the post-mortem in a very inexpensive way. We obviously are not going to spend $35 on it, but it would be part of either a Survey Monkey or something.
You guys spent $35. That'd be all right.
Did I say 35? Sorry, $35,000. But we will move forward with that and then come up with a new, a new strategy for recommendation.
Thank you.
Number 11 is to support community events and activities that create opportunities to build community and friendship, do more events, network with promoters. And again, we're proposing this to be partnered with our tourism. Coordinate calendars with McDowell Mountain Regional Park and Tourism, so we have one calendar where all of these events could be. And then tourism, again, contract to include keeping up with future events, contact hotels and restaurants to reach out to promoters, so when there's events going on that the promoters know and get the information about our hotels and restaurants. Okay, number 12, foster an environment of accessible, responsive governance. And upgrade Citizen Portal to be more user-friendly, offer more options, estimated about $10,000 of a fiscal impact. And what that would do is currently, we have an e-fountain system that is used fairly well, but it's more of a complaint-driven type program. We would look for a portal where citizens could really interact more with the town and do a lot more business with it. And then we thought about appointing a formal ombudsman, perhaps a retired judge, so that somebody very impartial, that could sort of be the go-between, the town and the citizens if there was an issue, a specific issue. But again, these are just proposals the staff put out. There'd be no fiscal impact. It would be a volunteer.
Thank you.
Number 13, evaluate customer satisfaction with town services on a regular basis and implement appropriate service improvements. Again, this gets back to that statistically valid customer satisfaction survey. And consider, consider this survey at least once every three years. If we wanted to have a way to evaluate it and whether we're getting better or not, we really need to do this and have the same questions so that we can measure exactly what our progress is. And to develop customer service performance measures utilizing, utilizing the ICMA standards. And solicit citizen feedback through a mail or asking how we were doing. Those are some proposals that the staff came up with, very minimal fiscal impact.
Vice Mayor?
Are these in-house surveys?
The statistically valid survey would not be in-house, but the other ones would be.
Okay, I guess that what I hear all the time is, we have all these surveys, and these are citizens, but they don't come out of here. They stay in-house. And what we need is the impact and the word and how citizens feel outside this building about what's going on in Fountain Hills.
Vice Mayor, maybe I misunderstood the question. When you said, are they in-house or out of, out of the house, were you saying...
You have surveys that are in-house that don't, you can't take out. In other words, I couldn't go up on the second floor and take a survey card and go outside and give it to somebody.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I thought you meant who was conducting the survey.
No.
If it was not a statistically valid survey, we could do that kind of thing. But, you know, if they walk out in clumps in the building, we have no way of knowing if it's statistically valid, but we could certainly do that. But it's probably more, make it more accessible, either put it on the web or just put it out at the library, and people could take it if they want and fill it in.
Yeah, I think that more input we can get from citizens, and we're better off, we're going to be.
Yep, exactly.
If I may, were you saying that, because the customer service ones are from people that are here, but the statistically valid one is going to be much broader than just who's actually had interaction here?
Right.
Okay. Henry?
Oh, no, thank you.
Okay.
Pass the potatoes.
Okay, those were the council priorities. We have a category called Other, which were, that the council talked about, but it wasn't not part of those. The ones that we previously did are all part of the strategic planning, strategic initi, or strategic directions. These ones that don't necessarily fit in there, so I'm calling them Other. So we had Other Public Safety, and we talked about at the retreat, funding for the posse based on specific deliveries, in other words, deliverables. In other words, using the posse to do some services that we would require, and with the potential of funding to come from contract with MCSO. Subsequent to this, I've talked to the captain, who doesn't believe that that's something that's functionally possible. So if there was a desire to contract with the posse for something, it would just come out of the general fund. And then proposing a bond issue for a fire station, if that was something that we wanted to move forward with. And the CARE program is included in the Rural Metro contract. That has a fiscal impact of about $24,000. This is a program that has been going on, but it's actually was never really brought to the council as a program, as a new program that we wanted to do. So it's a, it's a very good program, but we just wanted to make sure that the council knew it was, it was a new program last year, not this year. But we want to continue to move forward with that, and there is a cost of about $24,000 in addition. Okay, I'll keep going.
Vice Mayor, thank you. The proposed bond issue for the fire station, I think is a great idea, but I think we need to go through a couple of more years of recovery before we actually address this issue. We've worked on it and worked on it, and I think we definitely need it, but I think we need to let the recovery system happen just a little longer before we go into the bond for a fire station.
And the budget still does have that in there, because I still want to discuss that item, as far as a regular budget item, when we talk about capital. And the other thing with all of these, we haven't talked about capital and how it relates to some of these goals, and some of the things that we're going to be doing and that I did see in the, in the budget will help, like having the events and doing things like that for, like the Centennial Circle or some of the greening things or other, that would be conducive to the multi-generational or to have more of these events. So there, there are things that aren't specifically spelled out here yet, but I think will, will help us get a long way towards those goals, some of the things that are already in the budget.
Okay. So Vice Mayor, are we taking out or postponing this issue of the fire station? So in other words, it won't be in the Capital Projects Fund, and we did not budget for an election for it, obviously. It was currently unfunded. But we can leave it in the Capital Projects for discussion when we talk about Capital Projects, but as far as taking out, we won't include an election, if that's what I'm hearing.
That's my opinion. I think part of the reason we kept it in the budget was if there was a grant or if something happened that we were able to do it, we didn't want to not be able to do it because it wasn't there. But like I said, I haven't given up yet on it, so...
Okay. But we'll have a conversation about the Capital Projects, so...
Nor have I given up on it. And I will reiterate, I think it's something that we need, and the town definitely needs it, but if, if we have to take it out of the, out of the general fund or any, any other fund to do it at this time, I think it is a big number to be, to be dealing with. So let's, let's just set on it and see what the economy does for us.
Okay.
Julie, I just have a question for you regarding the CARE program being added to the Rural Metro contract. Now, so we would be paying Rural Metro, who would then in turn be funding CARE?
That's correct, yes.
Is there any, anything that we should consider or talk about as far as funding? Because this, the CARE is, is a program that originated, or at least the one that we have in Fountain Hills, came out of Fountain Hills. It was based on volunteers initially, well, Victoria Bertone? Am I getting that right? Bertone? Yeah. So is there an issue as to accountability if we're paying Rural Metro an additional $24,000, and then there, Victoria's reporting to Rural Metro? Is there something that we should consider where we're funding it, where, you know, she's reporting to the town? Do you see, do you see what I'm talking about?
Yes.
As far as the distinction there?
Yes.
And if we're going to continue with that contract in the future? And this is essentially a new program under Rural Metro supervision, of course, and I think that's where it should stay. But I mean, as far as the funding, the way that the funding is going, is there a mechanism we should consider as far as the accountability is concerned?
Vice Mayor Dickey, Councilmember Elke, the, the thought process that when we talked about this is that the CARE program is under the Fire Department. If the town wanted to pay for that position, that would be a new position for the town. We would have to add a new position and pay for it separate from the fire. The, if eventuality is where we go to a, our own Fire Department, we're going to take all those people, including CARE. So currently, right now, they're all paid for out of the Rural Metro contract. And of course, they report to the Fire Chief, who reports to the council, so, or reports to the manager. But, so that was the thought process, that it was not a position that we wanted to add, to add staffing for the town of Fountain Hills. So the way to do it would be to have Rural Metro assume the responsibility for the employee and pay for it out of the contract.
So other programs that are run through Rural Metro, they have their ways of evaluating those, so would you be comfortable if there was, and I'm not saying it isn't, it might already be something separate, but you'd like to have that be part of the evaluation that, that we have as a whole for the contract?
What I think, at some point, I'm sure this is probably planned by CARE or FIRE, to come in and talk about what that $24,000 is paying for exactly, and what those reporting measures, the deliverables are going to be and are expected of CARE for that additional money that we're paying to Rural Metro for, for that, for sustaining that particular service. I think that that'll be important.
Okay, we can be prepared for that for, at the March meeting, when we get right down into the line item detail and everything, what's in every expenditure. But right now, this is just, this is just a budget proposal, so... But when we get into the line item detail, I think that's be the opportunity to answer those questions and say what the, what we're, we're getting for that. We talked a little bit about some of the initiatives having a tourism component in it, so this, I kind of put all the tourism things into one. And basically, we would be going back to rebid the contract with them, and these would be the kind of things that we would include in the contract. Consider placing a visitor center downtown commercial space. Again, these are staff initiatives. This is not something the council came up with. Staff seven days a week, totally an unknown fiscal impact. This was just something that came up through our conversations of initiatives. Have the tourism promote our brand, including the town's trails. Coordinate with town on events. Coordinate events to capitalize on the two fair events, meaning new events, I think I heard at the retreat, new events on either side of the fairs. Communicate with event promoters for events. Link to hotels, restaurants, et cetera, to provide restaurant, and provide restaurant guides to the promoters. Promote the trails locally, nationally, and internationally. Trails on tourism website, maps in packets. Partner with McDowell Mountain Regional Park to promote trail that encompasses both organizations. In other words, there's a trail that goes through both the McDowell Mountain Regional Park and the town of Fountain Hills. So those were just some initiatives that we came up with. Again, this is just a beginning dialogue. If it's something that the council wants to move forward with as far as rebidding a new tourism contract and having these deliverables in there.
When you say rebidding, I mean, don't you mean renegotiating?
Actually, I would, I wanted, every year, we've renegotiated this contract. We end up with the same deliverables because we keep going back to the original contract. When I'm saying rebidding, I'm talking about a whole new set of deliverables and a whole new contract, so it would be a whole new bid.
That would more reflect what they're currently doing.
Correct, correct. It wasn't necessary...
It's broken beyond the contract.
Yes, exactly. In our original contract, we asked for things like media, all these media things and imprints and impressions and all of that, and I don't know if that's what really we want from tourism. But again, this, this is just a proposal.
And we are technically rebid, we, we technically rebid all of these community contracts. I think that would be an okay way to put it.
Well, when I think of rebid, I think of, you know, going up with an RFP and kind of laying it out there for anybody to come forward.
And I do think that's what we do with all of them.
We do?
We haven't done that in the past. I mean, we originally entered a three-year contract in where this would be year six, and all we've done is just extended those contracts twice. So this would be the third time. But again, if we do that, extending that contract just brings us back to that old criteria. So at some point, we have to create a new contract that has more specific, the things that we want out of the tourism contract.
And we can wait till, you know, Andrew's back, but, but we go back to when they were created, and they, and that's exactly how they were created, so that we were, they were bid on.
Correct.
So I don't know how much you can change one and then call it an official rebid or a new contract or something like that, and maybe that's the kind of thing we need to get some guidance on. Thanks.
Rewrite.
Okay. These other SPAC initiatives, the SPAC had made a presentation to the council back in January or December, and the, and the council tabled it. These are some initiatives that they put forward. They did not make the top priorities with the council, but I bring them back for discussion with the council as to whether they want to have it brought back at a public meeting to talk about, or if they would want us to include these in the budget. But again, they didn't make the top priorities, but they were presented to the council by SPAC and was tabled. So again, promote retention, expansion, and relocation of quality businesses. And I think that one of our other initiatives actually does that. And I think that one of our other initiatives actually does that. Move forward with a strategy for development for the two other target industries, sectors for employment expansion, healthcare and social assistance, and finance and insurance. Identify a slate of economic development tools and strategies, including tax incentives, fee abatements, et cetera, to stimulate economic growth. And encourage access to higher learning opportunities or the establishment of an educational or training campus within our community. And I'm just bringing these forward again. They were tabled by the council. If we want to bring them back, if we want to include them as priorities, they didn't make the original priority cut, so not sure what we want to do with these.
Again, I don't know that we, we folded them into some of these, so I think that they are very easily adaptable, and so particularly, obviously, the first two, the higher education, I think, goes with another one of the things that they wanted to talk about, which was multi-generational, which I believe we can cover that when we talk about events and when we talk about some of the other things that we have in here. So it feels to me like they are in there.
Vice Mayor, the one I would want clarification is on the last one, access to higher learning opportunities or establishment of an educational or training campus. We have worked on that over the year, and it's very time-intensive, and, you know, if we want to focus on business, it's real hard to divert or get some attention paid to that. That would require additional resources if we wanted to include that, and we did not.
Well, maybe what, when we talked about the theater and some of the potential uses for, you know, some of the buildings and things that are going to be going down there, maybe at this point, I know that Lori, and nobody's going to say no to someone who wants to come in and do something, and I, again, I do think that it goes hand in hand. We've heard this time and time again at MAG and the League and all that, on how education is actually a very good economic driver, but we did come up with the other three niche, or however we were saying those, and I know that those are the priority. So I wouldn't, I mean, I hate to see that not be part of what we continue to do, but I understand what you're saying.
Vice Mayor, members of council, if something came up, we definitely would take a look at it. But to actively recruit and try to find incentives to get them here is the part that would take the work. Okay. Other staff proposals, these are just things that we came up with at the end. One would be right sourcing for all town programs, and this is something that we're going to focus on over the next couple of years, because as we get smaller, there may be economies of being able to partner with other entities or communities on doing some of our programs. Particularly, what we've talked about is eliminating our street sweeping program that we have. We currently have two street sweepers, and we have a staff person dedicated just to that. If we contract with another municipality, we could save about $100,000 per year in the HERF fund by doing that. So this is just an example of an opportunity to right source. There are, you know, other opportunities in the organization that we will always be looking at, but I just wanted to bring those up to let the council know that one that we're likely to move forward with is the street sweeping one, because we've looked at that for about a year now. Okay. Unfinished business, these are some parking lot items left over from the retreat that we talked about from November, and I think I already know the answer to this, increasing the sales tax on communications. I heard that was to go away.
Exactly.
And the same with reducing our sales tax rate, replacing with the franchise and telecommunications tax, and I'm just going to assume that that is going to go away as well. If the council wants us to bring that back and have a conversation, I'd be happy to do that, but I'm just going to eliminate these two parking lot items.
Eliminating a parking lot instead of building one.
With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The staff is here as well. Thank you very much. We've gone through quite a bit tonight, and again, this is just a first glance at the budget. It'll be online. We will have lots of other meetings and lots of opportunities. When we meet in March, I think it's March 20th, it will be a special session, and we'll be able to go over all the detail by line, by program, by however we want to do it, and we'll be all available to answer any questions. And I also encourage the council and members of the public to come into Town Hall, and they can see this budget as well, ask any questions, and we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? No? Motion to adjourn?
So what?
On favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.